Good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, October 11, 2022. At 7:00 PM, I move to call the Fairfield Township Board of Trustees Meeting to Order. Mrs. Schultz, may we have the roll?
Trustee Hockemeyer, here.
Trustee Burden.
Present.
Trustee McAbby.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, founded on the principles of liberty, justice, and moral.
Our first order of business on the agenda is a proclamation for one of our Fairfield Township citizens. This young man has taken it upon himself over the course of several years to run a lemonade stand for the benefit of children at North Elementary. And I think it is very, very impressive that a young citizen of our community took it upon himself to do this. So we have a special proclamation for him tonight. And I'd like to invite my fellow trustees, along with Billy Smith, with Kayden and his family, to come up here to the center of the room where we will present this proclamation. So on behalf of Fairfield Township and the Board of Trustees, we have this proclamation honoring Kayden Cummings. Whereas Kayden is a student at Fairfield City Schools and a resident of Fairfield Township, whereas for the past three years, he has organized and ran a lemonade stand to benefit the students at Fairfield North Elementary School, whereas he donates all of the proceeds from all of that hard work to the, from the lemonade stand to the Fairfield North Elementary School for the benefit of students and needed school supplies. Whereas we wish to extend our deep appreciation to Kayden for his selfless service to Fairfield Township and to Fairfield North Elementary students. We, Shannon Hockemeyer, Michael Burden, and Joe McAbby, township trustees, in recognition of outstanding acts of kindness of Kayden Cummings, do gladly hereby proclaim, and this is the important part, that today, the 11th day of October, 2022, is Kayden Cummings' Day in Fairfield Township. Nice work, very nice work. You're welcome. Congratulations.
Thanks, Dad.
Thanks, sir.
Fine job, appreciate it.
Thanks, bud. Congratulations.
And you're welcome to stay for the meeting, or if you want to head out, we understand that, too. But truly, that's just a wonderful thing, if you think about that. How old is Kayden? He's seven, eight, just turned eight. So he's been doing this. Thanks for coming out. All right, our next two items of business, we're going to run these two resolutions, we'll run, we'll pass these resolutions together, and then we'll move to the swearing in. So, Mrs. Von der Har, may I have Resolution 22-127, please?
Resolution 22-127, appointing Joel Koemer as full-time shift captain in the fire department.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Chief Thomas?
So Joel Koemer has been with Fairfield Township Fire Department for 24 years as a part-time. As of yesterday, was a lieutenant for us, and today he'll join us as a full-time shift captain in charge of our Unit 2 shift. He'd be a great asset. He is coming to us from his current full-time position at Monroe. So we're very pleased to have him come back and join us full-time.
Great, okay. Mrs. Schultz?
Trustee Hockemeyer?
Yes. Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee McAbby?
Yes.
That resolution passes. May we have Resolution 22-128, please?
Resolution 22-128, to hire Christopher Sanders as full-time fire shift captain at a salary of $27.67 per hour with a three-month probationary period effective October 11, 2022, and the rest also applies to Joel Koemer.
I move to adopt 22-128.
Second.
Any discussion? Chief Thomas?
Once again, one of our longtime, part-time, Chris has been with the department 22 years, and he is leaving a full-time position at Liberty Township to come and join us. Again, great asset to the department as part-time officers. They have done a lot of work to help make the department what it is, and I look forward to them in their full-time positions being able to advance the department even further. Pleasure to have.
Excellent. Mrs. Schultz?
Trustee Hockemeyer?
Yes. Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee McAbby?
Yes.
And those resolutions pass. So what we'll do now, I'd like to invite the two gentlemen to come to the front. We'll move to the swearing in. And my fellow trustees, if you'd like to join me as well? Please raise your red hand and repeat after me.
I state your name.
I, Joel Koemer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the Office of Captain of Fairfield Township Fire Department.
Of the Office of Captain of Fairfield Township Fire Department.
Butler County, State of Ohio.
Butler County, State of Ohio.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Protect, preserve, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States.
Protect, preserve, and defend. Defend the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of the state.
And of this state.
And the rules and regulations of this township.
And the rules and regulations of this township.
And I furthermore do solemnly swear.
And I furthermore solemnly swear.
To abide by and enforce the mission.
To abide by and enforce the mission.
Vision and values of the fire department.
Vision and values of the fire department.
So help me God.
So help me God.
One of the traditions of fire services is when there's a promotion, we typically invite somebody from the family or somebody from the fire service to pin them with their new badge. So they've already selected people to do that, so if you would call up your... Now, if you...
Yes, sure, any... As many people as you would like to have join you.
So normally, we have the newly hired promoted individuals over by the flag with the trustees. We'll get a couple pictures. And once we're done with that, I'm happy to announce that there will be refreshments over at the firehouse. So we got one more set of things before we let everybody run out of the building, though. So congratulations, gentlemen.
Okay, our next order of business, we have two resolutions regarding hiring police. Maybe, may I have Resolution 22-129, please?
Resolution 22-129, authorizing the appointment of full-time police officer Cameron D. Wood, who is certified by Ohio Peace Officers Training Council at an hourly rate of $27.02 with a 12-month probationary period.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Chief Shabali? If you'd just like to say anything in particular about this officer and the other. Okay, well, let's go ahead and pass this resolution, the next one, then we'll do that. Okay.
Trustee Hockemeyer?
Yes.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee McAbby?
Yes.
That resolution passes. May we have Resolution 22-130, please?
Resolution 22-130, authorizing the appointment of full-time police officer Michael D. Thompson, who is certified by Ohio Peace Officers Training Council at an hourly rate of $27.02 with a 12-month probationary period.
I move to adopt 22-130.
Second.
Trustee Hockemeyer?
Yes.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee McAbby?
Yes.
That passes. Chief Shabali, please.
Mike, Cameron, if you want to stand in the middle here, face the crowd, your family, friends. Good evening, I'm Bob Shabali, Chief of Police in Fairfield Township Police Department. Trustees, Mrs. Von der Har, family and friends of our candidates, thank you for being here tonight on this very special occasion, the swearing-in ceremony of Michael Thompson and Cameron Wood to be members of the Fairfield Township Police Department. By doing that, I would like to introduce briefly members of our police department, Captain Doug Lanier, the Assistant Chief of Police, standing at the rear, Sergeant John Vanderright, our Administrative Investigation Supervisor, not sure where he's at, there he is, Sergeant Brandon McCloskey, our Day Shift Supervisor, Sergeant Matt Muller in the green back here, our Afternoon Shift Supervisor and a member of the Butler County Regional SWAT Team, Sergeant Jamie Mays, our Midnight Shift Supervisor, and I see also, also, also Tess Flynn, Officer Kent Smith, am I missing anybody? Officer Ryan Ouch, sorry, dumped here earlier, anybody else? All right, as you all know, our candidates go through a thorough vetting process, which includes submitting a lengthy application, a polygraph examination, a thorough background investigation, a second interview with Captain Lanier and me, a medical examination, a drug test, and a psychological evaluation. All of the candidates passed all the components that they were provided, and they will be, or Captain Lanier will read their respective bios in just a minute. So if Captain Lanier is ready?
Cameron Wood. His bio, Cameron grew up in a military family and was born on Andrews Air Force Base in Maryland. He lives in Hawaii, California, Florida, and now resides here in Ohio. He had the opportunity to move here and be closer to family, allowing him the opportunity to settle down and not move as he previously has. As a kid, his parents raised him with high standards, which he still holds to this day, and knows that will help him be a great police officer. As he grew up, he had a passion for cars and enjoyed working on them and making them look better. He always enjoyed being outdoors, riding dirt bikes, rollerbladers, and motorcycles, and also likes going to the range and shooting his firearms. He is looking forward to beginning his career here with the Fairfield Township Police Department. Michael Thompson? Michael Thompson graduated from Milan, Milan High School in 2016. That same year, Michael moved to Florida to build a foundation in his faith where he attended Pensacola Bible Institute. After a year and a half of classes, he had built his foundation and went to pursue the Marine Corps. In 2018, he joined the Marine Corps, and while serving, he was stationed in Japan from 2018 until 2020. He was awarded a Navy and Marine Corps Achievement Medal, and in 2020, he transferred to the Marine Corps Illustration Miramar in California. He immediately volunteered to be placed on the next deployment overseas, and in April of 2021, he deployed to the Middle East in the evacuation of all the Marine Corps equipment and personnel from Afghanistan. But on returning to the States, he was honorably discharged and started his search for a police academy. He learned about Great Oaks Police Academy, which is where he completed his training. On September 6 of 2022, after six months of training, he graduated from the academy. He has a beautiful three-year-old daughter named Delilah. She's here, I'm sure. And he enjoys exercising regularly, encourages others to meet fitness schools, and is excited to start his career here at Fairfield Township.
At this time, Mrs. Shannon Hockemeyer, the Board Chair, will announce where you end.
I state your name.
I, Cameron Wood. I am Michael Thompson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will serve my department.
That I will serve my department.
With respect and dignity.
With respect and dignity.
Serve and protect the citizens of Fairfield Township.
Serve and protect the citizens of Fairfield Township.
With compassion, courage, and integrity.
With compassion, courage, and integrity.
And uphold the Constitution of the United States.
And uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the rules and regulations of the Fairfield Township Police Department.
And the rules and regulations of the Fairfield Township Police Department.
And I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
And I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
Do the duties of Township Police Officer.
Do the duties of Township Police Officer.
And Township Constable.
And Township Constable.
For the Township of Fairfield in Butler County.
For the Township of Fairfield in Butler County.
State of Ohio.
State of Ohio.
During my continuance in said office.
During my continuance in said office.
If you guys want to, just for friends and family, and then after that, we'll be home, plenty of time to take photos. You can just point out, point them out. Thank you. If you want to take photos, we'll do that now. Afterwards, there'll be refreshments, and we're sharing that, thanks to the Fire Chief with the Fire Department next door, after we take the photos.
Now, everyone is welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but I understand there's refreshments next door, so you're welcome to stay, but you might be more interested in cake and celebration.
My favorite, too.
Okay, our next item of business is all business items for board discussion. Trustee Burden, I believe you have the first thing?
Yeah, past couple months, we've discussed the policy for park naming and township property naming, renaming, and I don't know if anybody had any more comments or questions, and if not, the discussion is over, then maybe we could ask the Administrator to put a, or I guess a motion on the next meeting's agenda to approve the policy change. I asked the Administrator, she hadn't received any feedback from, or questions from anybody, so I'm assuming everything should be okay, then. Okay, here is nothing.
We'll add that up to the next agenda.
That's great.
Okay. Next item, sale of Fire Department Suburban to the EMA.
So as you are aware, we did some restructuring of the Fire Department, and we took the Training Captain's position and moved it to the Shift Captain's position, which we had a vehicle assigned to that individual, and now that vehicle is no longer needed. So looking at the age of the equipment, the Suburban is the oldest piece of equipment utility-wise that we have. They were bought in 2012, moved the Tahoe into the building as the service vehicle, and the pickup truck only had 23,000, 2,300 miles on it, so I'm not going to let a brand-new vehicle sit there and do nothing. So I'm going to run that as the chief's car for my remaining time period. So I spoke with the EMA, because they were so excited to get the last one, and they actually have agreed to $7,500 purchase price for that one. I believe it would be in our best interest to divest ourselves of a unneeded piece of equipment. We can reduce our insurance cost and hopefully reduce our maintenance by having the oldest vehicle out of our fleet. So it is my recommendation that the trustees consider a motion to allow that purchase to go through. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any discussion on that?
What year is it?
Those were bought in 2012.
That's a 12 or 11.
I think they're 12s.
No, I think that's a great idea.
Point of order, I do sit on the EMA Board, so do I need to abstain from this? Okay.
So do we need to have a motion this evening? Is that what, it'd be better to have it this evening to...
The sooner you pass the motion, the sooner it can go away, sir.
Trustee McAbby, do you have any questions or concerns about it?
I don't know. Why is this legal?
Why is this legal? Well, we are law, law director every year, so does, do you see any legal or ethical issues involved?
I do not, other than we can suspend our resolutions by concluding the fine motion.
Okay. Okay, so do we need to amend the agenda to add the motion, or just make a motion to do it? Okay. Well, I make a motion to authorize the Fire Chief to sell the Suburban, 2012 Suburban or 11, whichever it is, to the EMA. $7,500.
Trustee Hockemeyer?
Abstain.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee McAbby?
Yes.
That passes, then I would assume that that motion will have to go before the EMA Board as well.
EMA board as well at further next meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Next item, the recap of the commercial vehicles focus groups. Zoning administrator, Mr. Goins?
Good evening. So as most of you remember, we held focus groups that focused specifically on parking of commercial vehicles, recreational vehicles, and trailers back in 2021. We held a series of meetings where we brought in citizens to discuss kind of what they viewed as appropriate for regulations relevant to the parking those vehicles. During the open forum meeting, residents were encouraged to engage in discussion, and their opinions were collected, and at the end of the meeting, the residents were also given the opportunity to vote on types of vehicles that they view as being appropriate to be parked in residential districts. After the four meetings were held, the information was collected and consolidated and put together, and this has some of that data. I presented this to you, or I think we provided this to you last week or the week before, so I'll just kind of go over some of the, the data. One of the main areas of support was residents did think it would be appropriate to increase the size of accessory buildings, just to allow additional storage of recreational, commercial vehicles indoors. They also, some residents believe that setbacks for commercial vehicles are, should be the same as RVs and trailers. And then there was also comments specific to allowing commercial vehicles to be in driveways and not on the roadways. As I mentioned, we also had residents weigh in on vehicle class, so we had a survey for that, and the data for that was, was clear for certain classes of vehicles. It was clear for Class 8, 7, 6 vehicles, which are very large vehicles and include, you know, semi trucks, garbage trucks, things of that nature. They clearly were opposed to that, and they were also kind of on the fence for Class 4 and 5. I think that visual aid had something to do with that, but just for reference, Class 4 and 5 vehicles are, well, Class 4 would be a 450, F-450, or 4500 series vehicle. So that's, you know, just the general opinion of the attendees at that group, or at those meetings. So based on this, I think there's, you know, the trustees could do a few things with this. I think it would be appropriate to share this with the zoning commission for their review as well, and either the township trustees or the zoning commission could initiate tax amendments. In the past, we've, in the recent past, we've had the trustees do that. Some of my general recommendations, if you were interested in tax amendments, were, one, we should consider the increase of size and height of accessory buildings to allow parking of additional recreational, commercial vehicles indoors. We could potentially, it seems like height seems to be more of the limiting factor, so increase the height to 20 feet in residential districts. The second one would be consider explicitly allowing boats and RVs to be parked in driveways and in the public right of way for loading and prep purposes from 48 to, somewhere in the range of 48 to 72 hours. I also think it would be appropriate to specify a day amount during month. And then the third one, this is kind of from the survey specific to commercial vehicle types. I think we should consider amending the definition to, to really drill down what we're going to consider a commercial vehicle, and if the trustees and or zoning commission thinks it should change, I think it would be appropriate to include GVWR, which is gross vehicle weight rating, instead of the current language of just one and a half ton or greater. It's just more of an official form of measurement. And in addition to tax amendments, I think we should, I just want to mention an option to kind of address the storage of commercial recreational vehicles specifically located in the right of ways. Through this process, it's been, better options have been presented to us to enforce things like that, and it would be outside of the zoning resolution. Townships, and Katie may weigh in on this at some point, townships have the authority to regulate the parking of these sorts of vehicles through the ORC. I've attached kind of an example of what that would look like. There'd be a lot of details that would need to be gone through, obviously, if this was something you'd be interested in doing. But if the resolution like that was passed, it would be, it would be an ordinance, a township ordinance, and it would be enforced by the police department. Throwing that out there as well. So that's kind of all I have as far as the summary of the, the meetings, so be interested to hear your input or questions, if you have any.
I do have one question as it relates to item number two, your, what are your recommendations for the tax amendments? So considering allowing boats and RVs to be parked in the driveway, and then in a public right of way for loading and unloading purposes for 48 to 72 hours, is that two separate things? Let me, let me explain. Allowing them to park in the driveway at all times, is that what you're proposing? And in the public right of way for 48 to 72 hours?
Yeah, no, that's a good point of clarification. So it would be, it would be both of those locations. So anywhere in the driveway and/or the right of way for 72 to 48 hour loading period, and that would be in lieu of having to follow, you know, like the 50 foot setback requirements that they would currently, they currently have to meet. And again, just for short periods of prepping the vehicle.
But to clarify, people, if they would still be allowed to park their RV if it's placed appropriately on the right of way, correct?
Correct, yeah. So it would have no impact on long-term storage of the vehicles. This would be specific to just the prepping, loading, and it would be outside of what's currently, and would, in our opinions, continue to be a permitted, permanent storage location for recreational vehicles.
You know, the driveway, you could sort of understand that for getting it ready for the season or shutting it down, but I don't think three days on the street should be allowed. The fire trucks, other safety equipment, some of our streets, people park on the other side of the road. I don't, I don't see a reason for that.
Do all of our homes have driveways in our township? So they could not park in the driveway if they have a boat and they need to prep it. There's no place for them to park if they don't have a driveway then, correct?
Somebody doesn't have a driveway?
Oh, there's, there's, yeah. Home with Belmont subdivisions.
So they have a camper, they want to get ready for a trip, or an RV, and they don't have a driveway?
Yeah, I hear what you're saying. I still think three days is too long to have it set on the street.
No, I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just, I think that's a long time. So we'd have to have some sort of wording that Mr. Mackey would like that worded. We may have to have something in, in there that says if no driveway is available to the resident, then allow it to be on the street. Is, is that what you're?
So, you know, again, something like that. I mean, if they have a driveway with two cars in it, and they want to park their boat or RV on the street because of that.
They need to boot the cars on the street, but the boat in a driveway?
I think, I think, again, and, and all this whole thing in general, I think it needs to go to the zoning committee and work its way through the normal process, you know, to amend the zoning tax. That's what we're talking about doing, so.
I would like to see it go to the zoning commission. And another point on the RV case and driveways, there are some driveways in the township that you can't park an RV or boat on. So there are people that have homes, and the RV will not go up the driveway, or down, as the case may be. But that's definitely an issue for some driveways in the township.
So again, they, I still wouldn't want them three days on the street, just from a safety standpoint.
Yeah, I agree. I think it would, it would be best served, I believe, if it went before the zoning, because commission always said first, and then brought back to us with recommendations, and then we would have to have a public hearing and that sort of.
Yeah. We could take it to the zoning commission just to bounce it around for a little bit and bring the recommendations back to you, see where you guys sit with that. And if you'd like, you could also initiate the, after that, initiate the tax amendment process and have a public hearing here. Well, it would actually be a public hearing with the zoning commission then back here, if that's what you'd be interested in. Or we, we could just have a public hearing. I think it'd be good to just have, just a general meeting with the zoning commission initially.
I'd like to get their, their input and feedback on this.
Okay.
And they, there's a process for them to, to do that too, right? So if we need to make a motion to send it to them, we can do that, but it would go through that whole zone, tax amendment change process.
Well, we don't need a motion for the commission to look at tax amendments, do we, or?
If we're just doing it just for consideration and for input, it wouldn't necessarily need to be a public hearing. It would be a public meeting, obviously, but it wouldn't necessarily need to be a public hearing, unless, unless something was being voted.
So you're saying we're allowed just changes only ourselves without going to them, without them going through the process?
I think we have, I have, we have zoning commissioners for a reason. I, I feel like it should go to them at least for consideration, and then, you know, even if they need a couple meetings to decide, I haven't have.
Yep.
You know, more input before it brings back to us with the recommendations. I'm okay with that as well. I just wanted the process to get started, because we had those meetings, those focus groups back in 2021, and I, I think it's an ideal time to get moving forward with it. So my recommendation would just be to have the zoning commission look at it at the earliest convenience, and we can get a call together for them, because sometimes that's difficult, right? Sometimes, yeah.
So are we finished that with the zoning commission?
Zoning commission, we have a full board, but we don't have any alternates on it currently. So no.
We can work on that too, right?
Always, always looking.
Always open for volunteers.
Yep.
Okay.
So the, the groups, I know there were four meetings, and I didn't, attended any of them, didn't feel like really that's where I should be, but the two that I was in the building when they were having it, there was a very small number of people here. I don't know if you tallied the actual total or not, but could you just give me some idea? I mean, was it five, 10, 50?
Total? Total number?
Well, each meeting and then the total, yeah.
Um, I could get that back to you, but I think in total number, we had less than 30 people come into the meetings.
Were there all four of the focus groups? Oh, there was more than that?
Is there more than that?
Oh, yeah.
I know we had a couple that were pretty, pretty very well attended.
We ran them at different points of time. There were some in the morning, midday, and evening, and we did that with the intention of being able to meet people with different schedules and different times. So, yeah, it's at least 30. Some people came to more than one meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So did you have a signing sheet?
Yeah, we have a signing sheet.
Oh, okay. I'd like to see a copy of the people that signed it, just again, just to get some indication of, were they all people that had a commercial vehicle or, or not?
Could be people with neighbors that have commercial vehicles.
Well, you know, in, in general, people don't like those commercial vehicles parked in their neighbor's driveway.
Yeah.
Or on the street, or actually in legally parked, you know, they don't like.
There was definitely a mix of people that owned RVs, didn't own RVs, people that owned commercial vehicles, didn't own commercial vehicles. Definitely both sides were represented.
Uh, thank you, Chuck, for bringing this information to us. I'm looking forward to thoroughly going through it and hearing what the commission has to say.
Okay, next item, update on paving, block mat, and retrace.
Thank you. So first, I'll update the board on the 2022 paving schedule. The county just let us know that the week of 10/17, there will be pavement planing. 10, the week of 10/24, they're going to do any additional repairs, and then the week of 10/31, pave in Fairfield Township. If I receive anything further, of course, weather will change things, and I think we're expecting rain tomorrow, I will let you know. As far as the curb and gutter, that was quoted, bid out, and we've received two results. One from Ari Miller for $113,990.40, and another from Edwina Construction for $95,981.50. So that's for approximately 2,000 feet, I believe. And we do have a resolution on tonight if you'd like to pass that, but it would be awarded to the lowest bidder in this case. So that's where that stands. 2023 paving, I sent an email that I'm sure you all saw was very aggressive. Jeff left to finish out two different subdivisions, and the total for paving came to $813,169. And then retraced for 2023 came to 4,900 approximately. So I did put together for the board recommendations, which it's completely up to you if it makes sense, if you want to be this aggressive. Part of our ability to possibly be this aggressive on paving is that the county is awarding a 2023 ARPA funding mechanism to all other county townships for the sole purpose of, of paving. And Fairfield Township, they will receive $307,306. So that leaves us with a balance. If you put together the retrace, the paving, crack seal, we usually budget 10,000, spend around 7,500. That's bid out by the county, and then shared throughout the townships. The machine, you add in the curb and gutter for 95, almost 96,000, take out the $307,000 grant from the county, and that leaves the township with a payment of 600 and almost $17,000. So we've been spending, in the 10, nine, 10 years I've been here, anywhere from 300,000 to 400,000 up to 800,000 dollars. What I had recommended is that you do have almost $1,700 still remaining in the ARPA fund. So if you spent that 616, 617 out of the ARPA, you still have a million dollars to spend. So that was an idea I, I thought that using essentially all federal dollars between the county and the ARPA that we received to fund almost $800,000 worth of aggressive roadwork. So there are resolutions to consider. They can be made per streets. We can definitely, if, if that feels too aggressive, amend as the board sees fit. But that, that's the update that I had on that.
Thank you. And the final thing under old business, I
And the final thing under old business items for board discussion. This is just sort of a radar thing. I don't think we need to take action on this right now, but it's something I would like just people to kind of think about. There are other places that have these infant boxes, and this might be something we would want to think about. I don't think we should take action on this now because there are some legislative and administrative issues around this, but at some point in the future, once those things are worked out, we might want to consider doing something like this. So this is more of an FYI thing for us to think about in the future. All right, the next item.
Before we go any further, another old business item, if we could talk about the drainage problem one more.
Sure, yeah, I have that in the administrative report, but we can definitely talk about it now.
Could we wait till the administrative report for that?
It's old business.
I mean, either way, it's fine with me.
That's fine, good.
Okay, so let me grab what I have here. Here are some packets, if you'd like to pass these down, and it'll, it'll be a combination of Chuck and I speaking about this.
Are there any out front for people to see?
I think I can put it up. I can put it up on that. Share that rub back. Chuck, what do you think, the area map or what, what map picture locations, what do you think we should start with?
So I guess it depends on what items we want to talk about first. Are we looking specifically at the, the drainage ditch? Are we looking at the pond? Are we looking at the?
Right, so that, that, good point. There's been a lot of moving pieces, and I've been able to work with the car lots. They've been very gracious. They have done significant work in their yard that it really looks like you lifted the land and it's, it appears that it will do a significant job of reducing the water that comes towards your house. So they, on either side, I thought I had, did you send me pictures, didn't you, Chuck?
Uh, not at their, not at their house.
Have them on my film. So on either side of the house, they went ahead, first of all, they put a larger swell, took out a hump that, that helps the wa, and seeded and helps the water transfer into a large box that's already there. So they, they redirected and they're going to capture more water. There's a better slope. So that's, if you're looking at the house, to the right side of their house. On the left side of their house, they lifted and added dirt and seeded and strawed and also put some, some additional slope. However, their yard then terminates where the natural swell has always been. And that natural swell, Chuck and I had to work with the HOA, and they did come out and cleaned that out, but they cut the grass and you can see where erosion has occurred, erosion to the point that where the car lot's yard ends, you could put your hand under, it's a very bizarre situation where it's eroding under the grass, and it's just not a stable situation. So that, that's what the car lots have done, beautiful landscaping, buried their pipes. We spent an hour together the other evening. So where that led us was what can we do with that swell? Because everything we're learning, it should be dug out further and maybe rocks put down. We could shore, that could be shored up more, buffered more for more protection. And again, that's if you're looking at their houses to the left side of the house. So I'm trying to make sense without a visual right in front of you, so I apologize if, I think you've all seen it.
Facing their house and then the.
Right, so, so they're, they're, they've taken, they've taken action on both sides. That swell on the left side is, on, on the deeds, it's recorded to Ascot Downs HOA, as is the pond. Dredging the pond is a significant and costly undertaking, one that the HOA has indicated they will not, cannot, and, and are not looking in the future to ever dredge the pond. They can't afford it. They have 44 houses in the HOA. Many apparently do not pay, so they have a hard time even cutting common ground from what we've heard. So the only way that I have learned, and I am not a law director, but I, I know you've been copied in and you and Larry have said that we, in order to get the pond dredged, we'd have to initiate a lawsuit. So, okay, so I, I don't know what kind of appetite there would be for that.
And that wasn't the only option, would be to cooperate with the HOA to be done. I thought he gave us two choices, one to file suit or one to share in the responsibility with the HOA.
Oh, I don't even, okay, I did, for some reason I didn't catch that. I apologize. And of course, there, there can be parties, obviously, you all know, there can be participation on any level if that's what the board decides with any of these things. One of the, okay, so the next piece of this, my, my thought was, the next logical step would be the Clinders report we have is obsolete. It, the two options they gave us, one, the county said they will not approve, and it will cause more damage to other houses and more water problems. The other option, we have submitted a pre-grant already and are trying to see if we can receive funding to help out some water down into a culvert on Morris Road. But that could be a year before we see that funding. So my next thought was, we could have Clinders come out and just suggest what we could do with that swell as far as, does it need to be dug out? Is it doing its job? Does it need rocks? Should it have, be shored up? Does it need more of a berm? And that seems to me to be the next logical step to kind of complete this whole process. I also believe that if the township participates in something like that, we would want to try to get the HOA to participate. And if they are unable to participate, understand that in the future, it is their sole responsibility to maintain this on a consistent basis so that it isn't flooding the roadway, impacting all the houses, impacting the car lots, impacting neighbors across the street, down the road. So with any action we're taking, it's important to note that we want to be proactive about the future so that these things don't reoccur, and they are ultimately not our responsibility, but we can be partners in, in helping get this where it needs to be. So that's one piece of the puzzle. The other piece is the map you're looking at, which I did not stick up on, I haven't found yet, but was that the area map, Chuck?
Yeah.
Okay, let me put that up. So other issues from other residents have been brought to our attention. And it's part and parcel of what is already going on. And Chuck, I, I think, let's go ahead and have you explain more or less, because I had Chuck and Nick go out and investigate. There's several different issues that contribute to this whole area's problems, and we'd like to address those. And again, same thing where we address them, but then moving forward, we are clear on responsibility so that this doesn't happen again. So Chuck, if you want to take over with what you did today. Ascot Down, Morris. Area map? Is that the same one?
Okay, yeah, so, I don't know, through
I'll find it.
Through recent, you know, conversations, not even recent, but through conversations we've had with the car lots and neighboring residents over the past few years, additional issues have been brought up and specific to the easement area that's between Ascot Downs and Morris Hill Estates. The, there's a series of easements that, that run along this, this boundary line. The larger one is in the area directly behind, what starts directly behind 3644 Reva Ridge and behind 3631 Citation Drive and heads west. There's a, what would typically be a public easement, but it's due to the timeframe of this, the development. It was, it was a private easement that captured a catch basin from that subdivision, and it flowed north, just east of 3644 Reva Ridge, and it outletted, the water outlets in that area and heads west on the surface. Through time and determination, the wires eroded the banks substantially, and that's not terribly uncommon with drainage easements that receive this kind of volume. But some of the complaints that we've had were, that there's, there's issues with how the, the, the easement flows. There's pockets that hold water. There's issues with how people are maintaining it. And again, this is like a, it's property by property thing. Some people cut their grass shorter. Some people let the, have kind of let nature take over in that easement area. And again, that's not that uncommon for drainage easements. But when we were out there, we took a look at some of the, the concerns and the problem areas. There was a couple cases of junk and debris concerns. We took some pictures of that, and it does look like junk and debris. So we can definitely, there's only part, we can definitely cite them and initiate complaint with them. If that's, you know, that's definitely an option. It's tucked behind a shed, and it was kind of hard to find. You know, it was, you had to be in the drainage ditch basically to see, to see the debris. And it's a couple basketball hoops and pull ladder and.
So this debris is in the drainage area?
Well, it's not in the drainage area, so it abuts the drainage area. So it looks like it's, it looks like it is right on the line of the easement.
Okay.
I mean, I don't, I, it's hard to tell exactly where that line is. But if you look at the map, that property, it's, you know, 3644 Reva Ridge, just west of where the, the drainage comes in from the north. You see the, the square there, that's the, the shed, the white square. The debris's kind of accumulated right behind it. So it may or may not be in the easement. But it's definitely something we can address. We also had a few other items brought to our attention, and we've reached out to, to the county's, county engineer's office on kind of a eroded utility box. They're going to get, they're going to help us address that issue. There's some wires that are exposed. They appear to be cable wires, but we're going to work with the county on addressing that. And then there's also some brush accumulation in the upstream side that's accumulated along a fence. It looks like it could have been 30 years' worth of accumulation. They never picked up a stick, possibly. I don't know. It's hard to say. But it, it has, it, it's within an easement. It has some impact on how, where exactly the water flows. It doesn't have a substantial impact downstream. There's no substantial impact downstream based on this. And there's, something to note, though, when we were out there, there was a, the catch basin, Land and Service Department repaired quite well. I just wanted to highlight that also.
When did they do that?
Uh, within the past couple of months, few months. I'm not exactly sure on the date of that, but the last time I was out walking the property, it was in disrepair.
And where, where does that, where's that drainage?
So that, that catch basin is west, it's on Morris Road, but it, it actually drains north. You see where the location of the catch basin is? It's located on one of the maps. It's right west of where the drainage easement kind of goes. There's a catch basin along the road, and it drains north, and it outlets to the box culvert under the, that goes under Morris Road.
Still trying to make this, still trying to cross at the same place that all that water is trying to cross.
The exact place, yeah.
So that's four different issues in addition to the, the swell that runs past the car lot's property, and we're hoping that attention to all of these. And again, Chuck did a fabulous job reaching out to, he got ahold of the county. And you reached out to everybody and anybody on the exposed wires. We've talked to Eric Continger again today about responsibility and explained some of the different documentation we found that regards the bridge and the upsizing of the pipes, and responsibilities are changed from different departments in the county throughout the year. So that's, that's played, there's a lot that's played and a lot of history, and
Yeah, and.
There's things we can definitely work on.
One thing they, their opinion is, is as far as the maintenance goes of this drainage easement, again, that's outside zoning violations and nuisance violations, obviously, is the maintenance falls on the property owners. And that's typical for a private drainage easement. It's the responsibility of the individual owners to maintain the easement in a workable fashion. And as far as who enforces that, you know, in an HOA, that's something that an HOA can handle and assist with sometimes. But when it's a private, to private drainage matter, there's law specific to, to drainage.
So there are 44 houses in the HOA?
Yeah.
So that's, that's pretty much the whole newer side of Ascot Downs then, right?
Correct.
Citation, all the way to the other end of it?
It's, yeah, section three.
Forty-four. And who were your two contacts with the HOA? You said two people.
Chil, Mr. Childers, one of them?
Mr. Childers and.
I would have to pull up the other one's name.
The other one has the same first name. David Childers and David.
But your initial contact had been with the BMO who has since moved. And is, so there's, again, just so many moving parts and pieces, so many different players, so much history, so many decades. So there's certain things we can definitely do to help. We're always happy to help where we're able, but then we have to step out because it's homeowner responsibility primarily.
Back in July, the board passed a, a motion to contract with, with the civil engineer.
Correct.
And, and we, if I understood you right, they gave us two solutions?
They did.
And we paid for that?
No, no.
So they gave us two, two things that they could look at for us and we never went any further?
No, because the county on the one said absolutely not, because what they wanted to do was make a box, a four-level box instead of a one-level box. And so do you want, would you, would you rather talk about it? You're probably going to use better technical terms.
Yeah, so there's a, one of the options that they, that Julie was mentioning was just a staged outlet for the pond. So what that does, it allows the pond to So what that does, it allows the pond to release water at variable rates as the water level increases. The problem with that is when there's, with the, with how the pond's set up, there's not a, there's not really room for increased volume of water just due to the basements of the properties that surround the pond. So it'd be, it'd be incorrect, increase the, the water level, the water, the groundwater would increase and flood everybody's basements. So there's really no, no increase of capacity that can be captured that way and they, and.
You mean by letting, by controlling how we release the water?
Yeah, right, yeah. It's a one-stage outlet now.
Yeah. And, and so one of the township's favorite experts told me that, that the pond needs to be clean. So I'm sitting here saying, why aren't we doing that? Whether we pay for it or they pay for it, we do kind, some kind of shared thing. And I didn't know if we needed to actually contract with a civil engineer in order to go along with that. As, as Mr. Geis told me, he's not an engineer, but that he would clean the pond, that would be the first thing he would do. So again, I don't know why we wouldn't do that. Again, whether we pay for it or the HOA pays for it, or the 44 homes pay for it.
Right, I knew assessing would be an option. And I've been told this could be upwards of 50 up to $100,000 because of the way they have to drain the pond. And then you have to let a lot of the, it's muck, so you're lifting it up and you have to let it dry before you can scoop the dirt out. So it's an intense and long process. So it, it ends up being costly.
But that, but that needs to be done.
Understood.
So, so let's start tomorrow and start the long process. That's my thought. I read Eric's letter, read late today. I went back and read his letter that I turned over to the income board in 2007 and it said the same thing, that the pond, somehow they have blocked the flow of water. I don't, I don't understand it, but it blocked the flow of water and let, instead of letting the water release on a, you know, not be as high when it is released. And both of those would allow the pond to hold more water apparently, which is what we need. We need, we need it to hold more water so that it can drain at a slower pace. So it's, goes where it's supposed to go and not in somebody's basement.
Right. So dredging could temporarily until that, that.
It's never been drugged. It's never been drugged.
Never, correct.
So, so if you get in there and you, whatever the term, muck it, whatever it is, clean out the, the, the other end, further away from the dam, it would hold a whole lot more water and allow us, allow it not to release the way it does today.
So how, excuse me for not knowing this answer, but how would we perform the dredging and then build the HOA? How does that legally work?
You can assess taxes, which is done by Ms. Schultz. So you would literally take the bill.
And I'm not in favor of assessing anybody at this point, but I just think that it needs to be done. And we ought to have some type of relationship with that HOA, just like we do with all the others, to make sure that we're not 20 years behind on doing things. They're not 20 years behind on doing things that create a mess like what we have today. So again, I'm not looking to assess. We've got the federal money, we've got $24 million. We can certainly take, you know, a half of 1% and, and we would, the way I look at it, if it's that much money to try to fix the whole thing, you know, under Morris and the drainage area, I lived right back down there for years. I know how hard that water runs down that creek. I know how it piles up at the bypass. So again, it's a, it's a, it's a mess from one end to the other. You know, I, I clean it out every four or five years or something. But I put the HOA on notice that, you know, this is a problem that they're responsible for and see if we can negotiate something.
And who owns the property that retention pond is on now? Is that owned by the HOA or is it owned by?
The pond is owned by the HOAs and I, I don't even know. The easement is by the Carlocks, so I believe that it, it's deeded to be maintained by the HOA.
Yeah, the record plat deeds the responsibility of maintenance of the pond to the HOA. It's, it's located on people's properties, but it's an easement that they can't do anything with.
And, and I'm sorry, is 7342, is that's where the, that's where the, the?
Other side.
And that's where the creek that was, or the thing that was just cleared out, right? That's where the water flows and was just cleared out?
Yeah.
It was on 7342?
Correct.
And that 7342 is owned by the HOA?
Our parcel is not deeded specifically to the HOA, but the HOA records it as an easement and the responsibility of maintenance is to the HOA.
So, no, I'm sorry, I, I didn't follow you there. I apologize.
It was, it's an easement on a, a private piece of property, so.
So a private property owner owns 7342 and there's an easement?
Yeah, part of it is a house. There's a house located on that parcel on the other side of the drainage easement.
Okay.
That, they own that entire parcel, but the, the maintenance easement is clearly outlined in the recorded documents.
And recently they have cleared?
They've, they've accepted responsibility.
HOA has.
The HOA has respect, accepted responsibility of the, the easement again.
And they cut the gra.
And they cut the grass. But it's been a while since they've cut the grass and there's been sediment buildup in the easement over the past.
And is that channel earth or is it concrete or?
It's just a, it's just a dugout ditch, earth and ditch.
Okay. And so more sediment has been building up?
Yeah.
Which makes then the ditch more shallow?
Right. And, and with increased sediment.
It makes it wider.
Yeah, with it, yeah. And since it's filling in, it needs a certain level of capacity, so it's widening. But the, the sediment's just going to continue because there's so much sediment in pond because it's, again, hasn't been dredged in like 30 years. So the rate that sediment building up, building up is fairly rapid.
And, and is there a cost estimate on dredging the pond?
Not, not yet. I've just been told that it, it's upwards of 50,000 and it could go up higher than that. So that's where the option would be do with the board like to have someone come out and price that or three, someone's come out and price that. And then if it's over a certain threshold, I don't know legally, do we have to bid it?
I have a legal question. Can HOAs be absolved of their responsibilities? I mean, and you don't have to answer that right now. I'd be interested in any case law on that. I mean, is this the thing where HOAs can just say, we don't want to do this anymore? Because if that's, what if all of the HOAs decide they, they don't want to have responsibility for that anymore? And I guess the concern is, is that if that happens in one HOA community, what's the, what's to stop that from happening in other HOA communities? And then does the township suddenly have to take responsibility for everything and everyone? So I'm just curious if, if that is, can HOAs just say, never mind, we, we don't want to be responsible anymore?
Yeah, like, we have the money, so if we're not responsible for it. It just seems like, an HOA saying that, it just doesn't seem reasonable or responsible.
There'll, there'll be repercussions with that.
Now, what are those repercussions?
I mean, just like if you have a private street and you want the county to take it or certain guidelines, you'd have to, it'd have to be up to their specs before they could and would take it. You know, so I would think it would be similar, but I, I would go ahead and get somebody out there to price that. Take advantage of this real dry weather we're having.
What is our thought on the measures that have been taken and if we think that they're going to be effective mitigation factors for addressing the issue?
Well, I, I'll have to go with the resident expert because I'm not an engineer either. So, and not, not knowledgeable on watershed. I, this is definitely a first and I'm learning a lot. I, I think the things I saw have been an improvement and are what experts have recommended. Now hopefully when it rains tomorrow, it works and I'll be out to see you. I, I'm encouraged by what I've seen. I'm encouraged that we got, that the HOA at least responded to come out and cut. We will absolutely reach back out to them and start negotiations on this. We will go ahead and get pricing on dredging. So I, I'm, I'm encouraged by all of this and I think some of the steps we took today, the problem areas, we'd like to also include that and just try to write things and then that way we stay ahead of it moving forward.
May I get an explanation on the red lines on this map? What?
Those are just utilities. Lines for sections of subdivisions.
Okay. I didn't know if that we're putting certain areas in, okay.
Yeah, so the, to the north of the, the main line that runs east to west, it's Ascot Downs in the south is two different sections of the Morris Hill subdivision.
So are yards on Citation, are they sloped to the easement? So there's water running off?
About half of the lot drains to the south and the other half of the lot drains to the street.
Right. But it all.
Drains to Citation.
To Citation.
So half the water on that property is running to this, that is on the south side of?
Right.
South side of 7352.
Probably close.
And then the rest that goes to the street enters into a storm sewer, which then goes to the retention pond, which then goes to the north side of 7348.
Yeah, all the water goes under the bridge eventually.
So it goes north?
North.
Then west and then south?
Then, yeah, then all goes.
Didn't you calculate over 100 houses?
There, yeah, there was, there was well over 100 acres that drains under the bridge.
It's just significantly changed as more subdivisions have been built?
And I would, I would, I would get that easement here of all debris. Start the process and clean it up. The easement means that you can't put anything in the easement, you can't grow anything, you can't put a shit in there. You can take care of it and pay the taxes on it, but you can't, you can't pile bags of trash up in there.
So is the entire board comfortable? Is it the will that I move forward on the steps that have been discussed?
Make a motion to get, have the administrator get the price to dredge or whatever the word is, clean out the pond.
And do we need a motion just to have him, have our seek pricing for that or is that just, she can just do that right without a motion?
Just do it.
That's fine. And I think we would need a motion to spend the money.
You don't have to, but I made a motion.
Okay. Well, I second the motion to have the administrator get bids on the, okay.
Trustee McCallum?
Yes.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee McCallum?
Yes.
And we don't need a motion to have Mr. Goins have the easement clear out. That's just part of the normal.
You don't have to.
Surprise he's already cleared and got it cleaned out by then.
Okay.
Try to stay out of people's deep, back in the, behind their sheds.
Well, send somebody, send somebody else in there. Send the police chief with somebody else. Knock on the door and then going around. So again, we, we had that motion in July. Do we, do we want to get an evaluation from the engineers to?
But I think the two.
Dredging would do and, and taking the, the cap out of that overflow or, I mean, I read what the two little stories he had in there, how much it was going to cost to investigate that. And it sounds like you went to the engineer's office and said, we don't want you to do either one of those, right?
They didn't give us their blessing.
So you did, so let me clarify because it sounds like you did go to the engineer's office and then those were obsoleted, that those were not viable solutions based on?
At least one was not viable and the other we have submitted for a grant. But again, I'm not hopeful on how that'll score based on the number of people touched by other projects. It, it's, it's a shot in the dark and.
Which, which one is it? So they're okay with one of the two choices? Which one is?
It was, it's so two, I don't, is it, what is that, north-south? What, what is that, that yard back in the back where they said we could put an extra culvert? So catch, catch the water, run it down the side of the neighbor's yard through piping and connect to Morris. So it, it's catching water before it goes behind the Carlocks back, neighbor's backyard into the side of their yard.
So that would be an easement?
I think it's.
Let's see, it's the side opposite where the pond is.
That's this side.
Okay.
Right? That's the, that's between Weaver Ridge and Citation?
You're looking at the houses to the right.
That easement.
And I think water, from what I understand, water used to be routed that way and then it was through the years redirected again. Not good history, losses occurred, but that solution was not X8, it's just very expensive. So we applied for the grant.
Well, I mean, there, there's something in the way right there.
Mm-hmm.
It's probably not all of it. Well, I, I'd be in favor of letting Claudio go ahead and do that part of it, tell us what all's would be in the scope so we could see exactly how much it's going to cost.
And we already passed that resolution in July.
Passed the motion to contract with them.
So we passed that motion and that we should get that information from them, right?
That's the way I look at it. Somebody stopped the motion from going into effect, I can understand when the engineer says, we don't want you doing that one, but, and this might be too expensive, but we still, even if we found the money, the first thing we do is have a civil engineer look at it, right?
Correct.
So again.
And now they have more to look at. I feel like, like a different process to look at with that other side as well. So we'll incorporate both of those, change, get pricing and report back.
Okay.
Well, one of, I think both of those separately were less than $7,500, right?
There were two phases. I don't, I, I thought they totaled 20,000, but maybe I'm wrong.
And I don't know which one was which, but it seemed like the first one was 7,500.
It was last, yes.
And then 7,500 is under your threshold, so you could turn them loose on that right away. You have the motion to do it.
Yeah, normally when, with this kind of situation, execute without the board involved. It's just.
Well, I mean, we're talking about it right now.
Right, right.
Is there any of us that would, don't want to do that? Don't want to spend 7,500 to get a civil engineer to tell us?
I think we passed the resolution in July to say, spend the 7,500.
That was a motion, but yes.
Yeah.
I assume you knew how much it was when you, when you said, put them under contract.
It's just so, there's, again, so many parties, so many moving pieces that the scopes change of work, that you've all done has changed. So now we're going to have to tweak what Claudio gives us, which is not a bad thing at all. So understand, I understand what you're asking, we will execute absolutely. So thank you.
Mrs. Von Hara, I know that was a lot of work. I appreciate all your efforts working with multiple facets from our zoning department to the residents, to the engineer's office, to the engineer, uh, company. So that was a lot of effort and a lot of work and I know it's still be more work. So I appreciate what you're doing and I look forward to hearing what the results are.
Thank you. It's my pleasure. They, Carlocks have been wonderful and then it's been a team effort. I don't want to chalk and nick and there's been, Jeff, but many people have participated. So it hasn't been something I've done single-handedly, but thank you.
This is the portion of the meeting.
This is the portion of the meeting where you, the residents of Fairfield Township, are invited to share your thoughts with the board. Please note that this time has been set aside for the board to listen to you. Your comments are valued and will be taken into careful consideration. The board will not engage in dialogue at this time. Presentations are limited to three minutes each. The first we have on here is Mike Davis. So, if you'd like to, please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record and you will have three minutes.
Can you hear me? All right, my name is Mike Davis and I live up here in Fairfield Drive and I've been in contact with the police department here throughout the last year a lot. I've lived in this township since 1994. I've seen the township grow and I have seen a lot of changes. And I'm very, very concerned about the speeding problem that we have on Fairfield Drive. And the police chief has been very gracious and stepped up and been really proactive and tried to really, I really want to compliment those guys. I mean, it's not an easy job. I am very, very concerned about the speeding up there on Fairfield Drive. I sit on my porch in the morning, I'm retired. And I sit on my porch in the morning and I watch people flying through the neighborhood. And I, and when you hear the tires on this car singing like they're on the highway and you see people flying past your house, you can really, and it's during the times when people are picking up their children, dropping their children off in the morning, it's very, very concerning to me as a parent. And I really would like to see the township here really step up and really try to make it better up on Fairfield. It's really gotten bad here in the last couple of years. And I just feel like it's very, very important for me to come to you guys tonight and let you guys all know that this really needs to be handled before there's a fatality up there. I mean, it's just a matter of when it's going to happen. And we all have children and we all love our children and we don't want anything to happen to them. And I have a grown son, but I feel for these parents. I mean, they can't even let their children sit out on the, play out on the street because of the speeding. And I was really impressed with the hiring of the new police officers because we need that. This city needs to grow with what's going on. And so, whatever the city can do to work with the, I'm sorry, the city, but the township, whatever the township can do to work with the police department to really make a difference up there, it's very important. So, I don't know what you guys can do, but I think it needs to be talked about and discussed about what kind of actions that we can take to sow people down a little bit. Whether we need to put more signs in there or make it a, like on Vineyard down here, where make it, you know, where they have signs, say it's a targeted enforcement area. I don't know what we need to do, but something needs to happen. And I reached out to Mr. Burden and...
Yeah, spoke to him last week.
With him on the front of it. So, this is very, very serious. So, it's kind of in you guys' hands. I can't do anything about it. All I can do is hope that somebody that's in charge of the township will step up to the plate and try to make something change. So, that's really all I have to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay?
And I will, if you'd like to prepare some recommendations for us and let's get something together at the next meeting and we...
Yeah, I did want to pull out an update as to the activity. I pulled it since May.
You can have a seat if you'd like to. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the compliment. Thank you very much. We speak once a while. Since May, I pulled the data, excuse me, the data. And we have had 18 warnings, 18 citations. As you recalled, you approved speed signs. We just got those about three weeks ago, setting them up. They're actually on J, one is on J Field. We have another one elsewhere. The process is to run them dark and what that does, I mean, they're very nice speed signs. And you also approved the trailer, but that's not here yet. But the speed signs, and that's just when they go dark, they collect data. So, even though it's dark, you may go by and just see a black screen. It's collecting data so that we can see how serious that problem is. At some point in time, we usually run it about two weeks, and this is new technology for us. And at some point in time, we'll extract the data and then turn them on. So, you will see the speed limit posted there and it'll flicker back and forth if someone is over that speed limit. So, we're on it. And he speaks to my officers, uh, once a week or so. And we understand the frustration. We can only be in so many places at one time. That's not an excuse, but we're doing the best we can.
What was your address on J Field?
Uh, I live on the corner of J Field and Karen, 6311. And I sit there and I see them coming up the street and going past my house in the morning. If there's a hill, it goes down a hill. And, uh...
Just tell your neighbors, look out, like we're going to sign. See who it is, it's your neighbors.
I just don't want to see anybody take a pill down. It's going to be too late. Instead of being reactive, we can be proactive.
Unfortunately, in today's world, you know, and I drive 26 miles one way and you see all kind of idiots out there. They're going 85. If you made it, if you made it 80, they do 90. So, again, but we'll have the police chief take this problem over there. And hey, I don't believe in warnings.
Hey, after, whatever, I mean, after, I think 30 miles an hour, you say, would be a reasonable range in the speed limit. But I'm happy because it's just not...
We'll leave that up to the police chief.
We're on it.
But we'll get out there and write some tickets.
Yeah, I mean, that's really the only thing we can do is keep the spot open and they can floor that up. It's going to give me a heart attack sitting on my front porch watching people run by.
I'll keep them out the front porch.
They're very, very similar. It's a straight thoroughfare through the bridge waterfalls and chimneys.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Andrea and Sean Carlock. If you'd like to approach and state your name and address for the record, please.
Andrea Carlock, 7348 Morris Road. I didn't know that discussion was taking place, so I don't really have much to say other than I appreciate Julie so much and all of her hard work in coming to our house when she doesn't have to. And she recently came and looked at the soil with us and I just wanted to point things out to her that I wanted her to see. Because just kind of my opinion, cutting it, it's going to be right back at eight inches in four weeks. So, um, we were kind of hoping, Mr. McAbby, you would have reached out to us in the past four weeks. We hoped you'd maybe knock on the door or let us know something. But I guess this conversation that just took place gives me a little bit glimmer of hope. Like Julie said, and you too Chuck and Jeff, this is just, doesn't just affect our house. We've talked to neighbors upstream and she, they've seen the condition of our neighbor's yard and the sticks. I wish they would pick them up. However, all the trash and sticks are coming from up above. And like you said, it's probably 30 years of sticks no one's ever touched. Sean did tell the elderly neighbors, "If you need help cleaning out the easement, I have no problem coming up and helping you because you are elderly." Whatever we can do to help solve the problem. I know this isn't a conversing thing, but I am curious to know what 44 houses are in that HOA? I just met one of my daughter's friends that lives right on Citation behind me. She said we are not in an HOA. So, I'm curious to know what houses they are because I don't know. They're all telling me we are not in an HOA. Because I was saying...
I think that's part of the problem.
Must not be an HOA anymore, but they would be in it.
Yeah, she's right. Citation and Dixon. And I'm just like, wow, wow. She's like, and they've only lived there a year. I will see the other house in that cul-de-sac that just sold on Sipsy Klein. A friend told me, "I intentionally looked it up and it did not list that it was an HOA." And that is the one directly behind us to the right. And that is the big yard that is in the easement. It was just listed and did not have an HOA listed.
Maybe we'll get this power company in.
I don't know. I don't know. So, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you everyone. We greatly appreciate it.
Well, and that kind of leads to my question for you is can, what happens if an HOA disbands? Do they, are they absolved of all responsibility, especially when there is a particular responsibility that they would have? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to leave because I got to take my phone.
Next, we have Maria Tangi. Please approach. Name and address for the record and you've got three minutes.
Hi, I'm Maria Tangi, 1891 Harwood Street. I just wanted to give you some updates about the garden. It's pretty much passed down for the season, but I did get a donation this, one getting it this week. I was offered a couple of weeks ago for a tiller, so we have our own tiller. And then as I was here with the meeting last time, a gentleman offered to give me a manure. So, I have some horse and goat manure, so we'll begin that once I get the tiller on with the manure. So, that's upcoming. And then we have our pumpkin carving experience painting on the 22nd at around 11 o'clock in the morning. And we have 25 people signed up. And I don't know if they'll come, but that's so far, that's what we have. And thanks Julie for all your help. You sent me an email and I actually am taking a master gardener's class and that's who sent the email, was my teacher. And I was like, "Hey, guess what email you sent?" So, those are the, so I have a lot of sources to try to find a reasonably priced bulk quantity of pumpkins. So, um, that's pretty much it. Let me see, 22nd, Tangi, that tiller, yeah. Let's, things are moving along. I'm excited for next year. I'm taking the master gardener volunteer program and one of the things I learned about the program specifically is that they will, if I can get the garden signed up as a project site, then we'll have constant volunteers at the site to continue working on it to make sure it stays up to date. I've also been working with HUGS, the Hamilton Urban Garden System, and the people who run that, so have been volunteering there, learning from them how to run a community garden even more efficiently. And it's been pretty fun. And they're going to, they actually might store the tiller. Lauren talks about them storing the tiller with full access and they can use it because they have a shipping container in their property. And that would be really exciting. So, and fun fact, one of my master gardener classmates is also volunteering at the garden and is helping with them. And in one month, I found all these people who are like, "Yeah, let's help each other out." So, I recommend master gardener's program to anyone. Thank you.
Thank you. That sounds wonderful. It's great what you've done out there. I mean, big thumbs up. Spectacular. A plus. Very nice. All right, fiscal officers' recommendations and reports. But before that, I would like to congratulate Fiscal Officer Schultz on completing yet another designation. What was that again, please?
Certified Paywell.
Certified Paywell Professional. Okay, so that required additional study and additional testing. So, in addition to being a certified government accountant and a CPA, she now has this designation as well. So, thank you for always...
Thank you.
...raising the bar and working and...
I swear, I'm done studying now. There will be no more.
I don't know if I believe you, but okay.
Well done. Thank you. The only thing I had is I let you three know that the audit is done. You'll be getting the report very soon. If you have any questions when you get it, let me know. Otherwise, that's all I have.
Where are we on the, on the issuing of the bonds? Do you have a money yet or...
Do not.
So, they haven't been sold?
But I'm not aware that we've gone, done, nuked with any of that yet. They're in contact with us about some additional, the Mahometi property. So, we're still talking about some additional.
Additional property?
How many acres is that on his? How many, 20?
110 maybe?
Oh, is it that many? Okay.
So, can you find that out for us?
I sure can.
What the interest rate is, what the cost is going to be?
Yes.
If they haven't issued those...
Haven't seen anything yet.
And this board has agreed to that. Maybe we could do one-year notes instead of 30-year bonds because the interest rate is 5%. I mean, I still think we should just pay for it instead of spend all the, all the extra money. Get the fund, cash summary fund here. I don't think I've ever seen it so big. $24 million? I don't see another RIT deposit. Where's that at? Do we know?
The RIT is coming. We've checked with the county. They're short a finance director and so a little behind.
Why is everybody else's problem become my problem? We want our money.
Right.
Is it when we think 235 or...
We didn't get an estimate, but that's about...
We give about 350, 300 to 350,000 a year.
Yeah, right. So, but we did follow up on it and that was the answer we received.
It is coming.
That it's coming, yes.
We stay vigilant on that.
There was an excellent article in the Ohio Township Trustee and Fiscal Officer Magazine. You probably read it. It was excellent, resolutions, when to use and when not to.
Compared to motions.
Yep. Excellent.
That's all I have unless you have any questions.
Motion to suspend the reading of the minutes of the following meeting, the regular trustee meeting from September 13th, 2022.
And before we do that, I, there were a couple of things I just wanted to maybe get added before, so we don't have to do a motion to amend and all that. And in there, there was, it says developer. Don't we have the names of the people that actually spoke? I know they were sworn in by the law director and then they spoke and it just says developer.
Probably the meeting minutes. I can get those added if you'd like.
Well, I just thought, you know, the developer, usually we would have the names of who's doing what. And I know there were several of them. There were several people that spoke. At least two of them were sworn in.
Well, when they're sworn in, I think we don't get their names. They just hold up their hand, right? Okay. Their names.
And I thought, I thought it would have been in here, but it's not in the minutes.
The developers were... Jay Stewart spoke on behalf of the developer and Jerry Royce spoke on behalf of the developer.
Where was...
Jay spoke first, I think.
And who did he represent? Was he the builder?
No, he's a consultant. He just represents land use issues.
Okay. So, if we could just get those two names added?
Okay.
And is it asked to add the names to what they said or just that they were speaking on behalf of the developer?
Well, developer says, "We're excited to be here," but we didn't know what it was. And I do remember it was two of them. So, if we could just put the name developer, comment, put their names. So, they would be in the adopted minutes. By the way, these minutes were already on the website today. They shouldn't be up there until they're adopted. Who did that?
Me.
So, are you asking that we not approve them this evening?
No, we've got the two names, so, you know.
Approve what additions?
Add those names in.
Okay. Well, then I second the motion to waive the reading.
Mrs. Schultz?
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee McAbby?
Yes.
That passes. Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee McAbby?
Yes.
I apologize. I thought you were going to second since you also made a motion to approve.
Motion to pay the bills?
Second.
Mrs. Schultz?
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee McAbby?
Yes.
That passes. Next item, the administrator's report.
Hi, thank you. Sorry, you've already heard enough from me, but I do have a handful of other items. One being the electric aggregation. And I believe you did see what was sent to us, but... And I believe you did see what was sent to us, but I just wanted to publicly make it known that our current electric aggregation program, it expires in November of 2020. So the goal for
21?
2022, sorry, 2020. I don't even know what year I'm in. 2022, I apologize. And the goal of Energy Alliance as a consultant is they want to find an alternate supplier that can beat Duke Energy's price, which is they have a rate of 6.38 per kilowatt hours. They have not been able to beat this, so they are not recommending that we renew. They actually believe that we should convert back to Duke's pricing and then they'll continue to watch the market with plans to bring options to the township when rates become more favorable. But they feel like the earliest a program would return is spring of 2023.
So the question I would have is if we do not renew this time, it doesn't have to go back to the voters again to reengage?
No, we're gonna do the same thing we just did on the gas, right?
Correct.
Gas expired early last, early this year.
Correct.
And then when they
Got the rates down.
settled some and they went in there and started buying.
I understand if we were waiting, let's say this goes on for two years. Is there like a timeframe that we are not with a?
Right. And of course, I'm not a law director, but my understanding is once it's been voted through, then they, that's been voted as a viable program. But I, yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, like, if we just agreed to do the, the Duke price to keep us in the program.
They can, they're still able to shop.
Right. So, no, I'm, I'm fine with that. That's, that's a good idea. I'm glad they are willing to admit, like, hey, right now we can't beat the, the price that's out there, right? That's what they're saying.
I prefer someone that's being honest and has integrity and, but these changes always bring about a lot of reaction from residents, which I understand, but I'm trying to communicate proactively and then we'll get more information out on the website. We'll, we'll receive calls and field those. And Energy Alliance will always field calls. I just saw it important that I brought, brought that forward now.
So the October, November bills will say Energy Alliance.
And then it'll
But then in December, it will say Duke Energy.
Correct.
Okay. Just so the residents know what is expect, or what to expect. God, I thought it was in this Greek program. Why am I not longer in there? Well, it's because that expired and a better deal couldn't be reached yet.
Right.
Okay.
And the key word being yet because I think they will find that.
Sure.
That might be a good news story for our, for the Journal News and the Inquirer to cover too.
I didn't have the Journal News covered Fairfield Township.
Well, just the, the, just with the, I'm with the issue of
Yeah. Well, I mean, because I saw like when all the trick or treating hours are for everyone in Butler County except for Fairfield Township, but I want the residents to know there will be trick or treating this year, even though the Journal News is not reporting it.
I saw that.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Zoo Keith Sweater called me. She did ask.
Well, we get new love from the Journal News. Everything's about everybody else. Westchester Liberty, you know.
Uh oh.
So.
You subscribe?
I do subscribe to the Journaliz and I don't see
Tell them all about it.
Yeah, I should, I could tell them I canceled my subscription. Like, I can't read anything about where I live, so.
They're busy. Everybody's busy and stretched.
Well, those are the minutes. No. Please continue, Mrs. Fonderhar. I apologize.
No problem. Ohio issue one that will be placed before the board this evening for consideration to support. And basically this will, it's a safe, it's been termed as a public safety when setting the amount of bail. And this actually relates back to the incident we had at Walmart where we had someone out on bail and then a leap of situation occurred. So it would require Ohio courts when setting the amount of bail to consider public safety, including the seriousness of the offense as well as the person's criminal record. I mean, there's a whole myriad of conditions, but that was sent to you and that kind of recaps it for the public.
If I might, if I might add.
Sure.
I attended the club meeting, the Coalition of Large Urban Townships, of which I'm one of their representatives for Southwest Ohio. We had that meeting last week and this was one of the things that they suggested that all townships put on their, on, to be voted on. So I believe the Hamilton County townships, a lot of them have passed this one too, and I thought it would be wise for us to do too because it does really hit home. And this issue does seek a legislative cure to the judicial decisions that were made that impacted bail setting, as Mrs. Fonderhar stated. So that is on our agenda this evening to consider and I think it's important because it, it would have and does relate to what happened at our Walmart.
What about issue two? Were you guys gonna talk about that one too?
Not this evening.
I haven't investigated that one yet. Would you like me to for the next meeting?
No, I just wondered.
I saw that it was on there, but I didn't even, I was focused on one.
It basically says that you have to prove who you are and where you live to vote. But I mean, you, everybody should be reading about those issues so that when you go in, you'll know which way you wanna vote.
Youth Coalition update. You've met them at the last meeting and I'm pleased that the next two days we will have seniors come in and then juniors come in. We have shirts, lanyards, and they'll be concentrating on admin this week. So we're welcoming them this week. Green Lawn, it's slated to reopen tentatively November 2022. The work is beautiful. Phase one looks to be highly successful. Its shutdown started September 26th. Medias, you might have noticed we put some pretty fall banners out and we have a resolution on for continued maintenance and landscaping. We are having splash pads and some beautification of the parks priced out. And Chuck, if you wanna weigh in on, you have some updates on the pocket, the next pocket park up in the Five Points area.
Yep. So last time we met, we discussed briefly that we did receive funding and all the contracts are squared away with the county and we can start to move forward with that. I spoke with them recently and they said that the, that we have kind of two ways that we can administer the grant. They said that, that county would be willing to just receive invoices and do that way or we could do it in a reimbursement fashion. So we're exploring both those options right now. But I wanted to bring you guys in and just look at a few options that we've received so far. So here's a few. I guess I'm probably here. I'm just giving you guys a few proposals that we've received so far. The first one was, is from PES and it was the one that we used for the application of the funds back in 2021. And on it has a basketball court, I think set, it's slated for seven parking spaces, little bit of walking paths, playground and some swings. I think kind of having those multiple uses, including the ones I just mentioned, is a good idea. I don't think we should spend all our money on a playground. We've also received recently proposals from DWA. They actually gave us three options. I only showed you two. The third option, it was, it was expensive. It was, it, it spent all of our, our funds and it was just for the playground. So I guess at this point, I mean, it's little, we're getting a little bit further in planning of it. We have, as I mentioned, 160,000 in the grant. The costs are, have increased since we might have received this quote. It was, the budgetary quote was 175. I spoke with PES recently and they said with, you know, with increase in everything, just for budgetary purposes, that, that similar type of work would be closer to 200, 215,000. So I guess at this point, we could discuss whether the board wants to kind of stick with just that 160 or do we wanna consider chipping in additional funds to, you know, kind of improve the, the playground in general. So I'd be curious to, to hear from the board on that.
You, you not gonna give us the other one?
I can email you, to you. It was, it was way outside of the, what I requested. It was, but I could, I could give it to you at a later date. It was, I think it was 195,000.
I think we
I'm sorry.
I think we have to decide what we want and have them, two or three people bid on it just to be competitive. Everybody I talked to agreed about the basketball court. And I would mention on the basketball court that it doesn't have to be a traditional size. It could be smaller. And, and I would also suggest that you do like we did on North Elementary's playground back in the early 90s, mid 90s. We put different height baskets. If you go over there, it's awesome. You can go down and take your six-year-olds that can shoot on a real basket because it's eight foot, you know? And have, have a different size. They can step up. You can still play, you know, a game, but most of the time it's gonna be half court or whatever, but that would just be something I would throw in.
Could you add that on the side of the?
That's what I would do.
Have the full height and the normal positions and the smaller ones on the side?
Maybe one on this side, one on this side with the different heights.
Will a whole court fit?
Uh, not, a full court, I think of like maybe high school standards or maybe even below that. It was, it was, it wasn't 94 feet, it was 76 by 45. It was like a, it was a regulation size that would fit on a land. It wasn't, it's not like a full regulation.
Just what would fit on the land.
Yeah.
Not a regulation basketball court.
It's a regulation
Something.
You.
Member school maybe?
Right.
When do we have to spend the grant money from the county?
So we, we don't have a real tight timeline with this. I mean, I think we have, we do currently have the opportunity to be, if we were aggressive in moving forward with the purchasing of playground equipment, there are cost funding matches. We, we were able to take advantage of that when we
End of the year, we had an end of the year
Right. End of the year discounts.
Right.
Yeah, so we did, we, we did that with DWA for the playground by the police department and we were able to get, I mean, a substantial amount of money knocked off the cost of the equipment. It doesn't impact any of the insulation or anything like that. You mentioned going out to bid for it. That's an option. What we did in the past also was we utilized a co-op and that was a program that is similar to like state match or state.
Yeah, none of us actually go out and bid, but it, you know, they, those show you what they think.
Right.
We should determine what we want and then say, okay, here it is, prices.
Right. I think, yeah, I think that would be good. I think what I still would be interested in, what is the dollar amount that you'd like to see? Because I, we have the 160 with the grant. Does the township wanna kick in additional 30, 40,000? If so, that's great. If not, I'll, we'll scope it to that 160,000.
I don't have a problem with doing the extra 40 if, if what we're getting is what we want. You know what I'm saying?
You will get exactly what you want.
That'd be unusual, but I'm
I'll get exactly what you want.
Yeah. That'd be more likely.
We were talking a basketball court. We're talking some playground equipment, correct?
Yeah, basketball court, little shelter, some picnic tables, a little bit of walking paths, and we need to install parking.
I'm fine with that 165 and I'm fine with adding a little bit to that, just in light of the fact that prices have gone up. I don't wanna get outrageous with it, but I think going above that would be a little bit okay if maybe because prices have gone up. But perhaps we can maximize the end of the year discount.
Well, thank, we were at 164, right? And so you had 20% of that gets us another $32,000. So that's close to 200 because, I mean, everything's gone up between 15 to 25%.
Right. Yeah. We have steel, we have asphalt, labor.
I don't, I don't think that's unreasonable, so.
And one of the other things we learned is we want it covered. We want the picnic tables covered. We want, we want the paintout piece covered if at all possible, so you can use it in any kind of temperature. We want a couple of benches where people can settle, or maybe just the picnic tables are okay, but.
And we could always add more to it.
Does that give you a direction to go?
Yeah, so it sounds like you guys would be comfortable spending around 200?
Well, because you're, you're at 164, right? So that gets you
Less than 200.
I guess you're close to 200 at least.
Yeah, a little less, I can, less than 200. Got it.
I'm, I'm sorry, but yes, I do. 2024 bridge closure, closure update. Bellstein Boulevard Bridge in Hamilton will be closed. I sent information on that, so we'll make sure we communicate as much as we can with the public to help Hamilton spread that word.
And that's the bridge that leads from Fairfield Township to the high school.
So, okay, so then it is real critical that we
Yeah. I mean, they can detour down to, well, Fillmore. Go either way.
Spring of 2024.
Okay.
So that's still a ways away, but it just came through. The last couple of things I have, we had a very, I'm very proud as usual of our team. We had a very successful, our most successful barometric screening, flu shot drive, substantial participation, which leads to substantial points on our 365 for Humana, which is getting us all to silver faster. We're keeping that in front of people. I'm very proud of what the, the team leads are doing to encourage participation with their people so that, that we are continuing to push all that forward. And that also included Chief Thomas was gracious enough to schedule CPR and first aid training that we can all attend. Again, additional points, never hurts to have that training. And I scheduled several, several blood drives. That also accrues points and I think it's a great thing for the community. And then you see disasters like that are happening down with the hurricanes, so the blood drives are scheduled for January 9th of next year and then October 7th of next year in tandem with a firehouse open house. And outside of that, I do have a veterans update that I will forward you from Fred Valerius. And the last thing is that Chuck did a fabulous job. And thank you to Phil Clayton from the MA and Chief Thomas and, and working as the team. But Chuck did a phenomenal, it was thanks to you, five grants were submitted to the theme of funding and they include phases for Green Lawn Road, Canal Road, Hayter Avenue, King Avenue Sewer, and then the Morris Road Project. So I, I will go ahead and forward that information to you. We just did the pre-app so that we have someone that will consult with us and help us through the process for all five grants. That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, on to motions and resolutions.
I'd like to accept the resignation of Jim from the Southern Field Board.
Second.
I'd just like to take a minute to thank Mr. Lupidi. He has been a loyal and faithful member of that board for many years. I've heard many, many very good things about him. He, his shoes will be difficult to fill, so he definitely has the gratitude of Fairfield Township for the work that he's done. We might even wanna do a, a thank you note or possibly a proclamation or something for him because he has done, he's done a lot of good work for us over the years. Mrs. Schultz?
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee McAbby?
Yes.
That passes. May we have resolution 22126, please?
Resolution 22126, approving open purchase order balances.
Second.
Any discussion?
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee Burning?
Yes.
Trustee McAfee?
Yes.
That passes. Next resolution, please.
Resolution 22-131, authorizing the administrator to enter into contract with TR Gear Landscaping for the Fairfield Township Princeton Road Medians at a total amount of $12,884.
I move to adopt 22-131.
Second.
Any discussion?
More or less than last year.
It's not significantly different.
It's the same.
I'd have to pull it up to be exact.
I just wondered if anything going up.
Mrs. Schultz?
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee Burning?
Yes.
Trustee McAfee?
Yes.
That passes. Next resolution, please?
Resolution 22-132, authorizing the administrator to execute the memorandum of understanding for dispatch services with the Butler County Sheriff Department at a total cost of $197,282.18 for the 2023 year.
I move to adopt 22-132.
Second. Any discussion? Mrs. Schultz?
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee Burning?
Yes.
Trustee McAfee?
Yes.
That passes. Next resolution, please?
Resolution 22-133, appointing Arthur J. Simmons III as a full-time Public Works Department employee at an hourly rate of $21, effective hire date October 17, 2022, with a 12-month probationary period.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Any discussion?
This is filling the spot that was vacated?
Correct.
He has all the credentials necessary?
He actually has his CDL. Jeff did, his daughter was married, so he has been out of town for a wedding. But he received a total of eight applications, interviewed all but one, and let's see, this applicant has all of his testing done, is CDL certified, and has been, received drug and alcohol pre-testing. So yes, the answer is yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee Burning?
Yes.
Trustee McAfee?
Yes.
That passes. Next resolution, please?
Resolution 22-134, supporting State Issue One to require courts to consider factors like public safety when setting the amount of fail.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
And discussion, this is what we mentioned before. This is that statewide legislative remedy.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee Burning?
Yes.
Trustee McAfee?
Yes.
That passes. Next resolution, please?
Resolution 22-135, approving the resignation of Austin L. Reed from the police department.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Any discussion?
I don't see any attachments, so. I'm sorry, Exhibit A?
I'm sorry, I have one. I have one.
Is that it?
Yeah, that's it.
It's not labeled. Just those.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee Burning?
Yes.
Trustee McAfee?
Yes.
That passes. Next resolution, please?
Resolution 22-136, prohibiting the establishment of any enterprise that includes retail dispensaries, cultivators, or processors of medical marijuana within Fairfield Township, Ohio.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question. This is, I guess, until this point, we've had a moratorium. So now this is just making a resolution. And going forward, we don't need to keep renewing the moratorium, correct? Okay. Thank you.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee Burning?
Yes.
Trustee McAfee?
Yes.
That passes. May we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution 22-137, designating Fairfield Township Bridge for bid on the attached paging Estimate List, Attachment A, to be certified for funding upon the awarding of contract as determined by the Butler County Engineers Office, with a cost not to exceed
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Any discussion?
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee Burning?
Yes.
Trustee McAfee?
Yes.
That passes. Next resolution, please?
Resolution 22-138, designating Fairfield Township Bridge for bid on the attached Retrace Estimate List, Attachment A, to be certified for funding upon the awarding of contract as determined by the Butler County Engineers Office, with a cost not to exceed $4,902.11.
I move to approve 22-138.
Second. Any discussion?
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee Burning?
Yes.
Trustee McAfee?
Yes.
That passes. May we have the next resolution, please?
The next resolution, I'm not sure that we'll use DJL because it's contracted out by the county. So I don't know if we table this. It's not something that's critical, important, and I think it needs to be rewritten. And I'm sorry that I did not catch that.
Okay, so, we'll table it. Motion to table?
Second.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee Burning?
Yes.
Trustee McAfee?
Yes.
So we'll look forward to seeing that in November. Okay, next resolution, please?
Resolution 22-140, authorizing curb and gutter repairs from a Lita construction at a price not to exceed $95,981.50.
It says 21-140.
I changed mine already. I changed. And I just read it. I caught it.
Okay. I move to adopt 22-140.
Second. Any discussion?
Are they going to start right away?
Yeah, I'll have to abstract that. I hope so. I would assume so because they're going to need to do that before the paving occurs. And they've moved paving up, so.
They might have moved it up, but it will still be October 30. That's when they get to us, which is okay, because it gives us time to do the contract. All three of these are from the 2272?
Correct. And also including the $307,306 that we will receive from the county, which I don't know, Shelley, is that where you're able to deposit that money?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee Burning?
Yes.
Trustee McAfee?
Yes.
That passes. Next resolution, please?
Resolution 22-141, declaring nuisance and ordering abatement on the properties listed below, and further authorizing the zoning administrator to initiate complaints. Properties include 2484 Conover Street for junk and debris, 3880 Hamilton Middletown Road for parking of vehicles, junk and debris, 2637 Lennox Avenue for high grass, junk and debris, parking of inoperable vehicles, objectionable, noxious, or dangerous uses, building disrepair.
I move to adopt 22-141.
Second. Any discussion?
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee Burning?
Yes.
Trustee McAfee?
Yes.
That passes. Under announcements on Saturday, October 29, from 2:00 to 4:00, we'll be having our annual treat street at the Bridgewater Falls. Always a good time, a great opportunity for family fun and costumes and all kinds of good stuff up there. Our trick or treat will be on Monday, October 31, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. The Fairfield Chamber Annual Dinner will be Thursday, November 3, 2022, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at Receptions. Our next Fairfield Township Board of Trustees meeting will be Tuesday, November 8, at 7:00 p.m. Our offices will be closed to observe the Veterans Holiday on Friday, November 11, 2022. And I believe our Veterans Day Parade is going to be Thursday, November 10. Correct? So we invite the community to come out and be a part of that. Any board member comments?
I just want to thank Superintendent Billy Smith for coming out tonight to support Kaden Cummings and our proclamation for him. Congratulations to him for all he's doing as well. I do want to thank Fairfield City Schools for inviting us to the Community Night at the football game upcoming. That was an exciting game. Mrs. Von der Haar's husband was rooting for the other team, just want to make note of that. That was with LeCoeur West, and of course, he's very involved with them. So it was fun gripping with him.
Put a note in her file.
And then, you know, our next meeting is on November 8, and it's election day. So before you tune into this meeting, make sure you go to the polls and vote. And I'm looking forward to hearing Mr. McAfee's report on the TID.
Okay. So the fourth stakeholder meeting was last week, and we all attended, about the North Hamilton Crossing. And to summarize, they've narrowed it down to two possible paths for the road to go. I had conversations this week at the TID meeting, and there's still a lot of study that needs to happen. I'm a little worried that both of those cut the bottom farm. But I was assured that we're at least a year out before the TID votes on it, although we will start spending money, federal dollars, early next year unless something changes. So it is, it is moving, and I would encourage anybody and everybody to pay attention. There'll be a public meeting in January. That's what the target is for everybody. And we hope to get a lot of input there. And then as we start the environmental, that could move it either direction. So again, those are all things that Mr. Burning and Mrs. Bonham were at the meeting Monday, and I think that's a good place to be on the second Monday of each month at 8:30. So November, we may or may not meet, and then December's the first Monday. But I would encourage everybody in the township to pay attention to that, and go online and make comments, or go to the public meeting when it comes up, so that you can have your input. That's it for me.
I just want to make one comment. Thank you, Mr. McAfee. One comment I would just like to make is that Fairfield Township residents, the Bonham family, are being asked to sacrifice their family livelihood, a portion of their family livelihood, for the economic development, the way I see it, along this North Hamilton Crossing. I think that's a big ask. They asked the family to sacrifice generational income so that a neighboring community, city of Hamilton, can benefit from this project. I'm against it. There was, at the original stakeholders meeting, there was like seven or eight or nine different options. And at the second one, the two options that cut through the bottom farm were eliminated, but somehow, because of some quirky, the way the funding mechanism happens, they had to be put back into the fray. And now, all seven were at stakeholder number four, and those are the only two options that are presented to the TID. I'm not blaming the TID, I'm just saying that's what was presented by the, by the, I guess, the driving force behind this North Hamilton Crossing. Those are the only two options that are out there now. So also, not only the bottom farm issue, I think there's going to be issues that it's cutting through between 45 and 55 homes. Those homeowners in the city of Hamilton may want to come out to that meeting, as well as, there's a whole community that walks to one of the Hamilton City School, elementary schools, and that community would be cut off because of this boulevard going down one of the streets. And so they would, those children that walk to that school will have to cross this boulevard to get to their school. And I think that, I hope those community members also come out and express their concern. I've talked with the Bonhams, and they are opposed to this. And hopefully, they'll get, if it's forced on them, hopefully they'll get their fair amount for their property. Just my opinion.
I don't know that quirky is a technical term.
It's my technical term.
But I understand what you're saying, and I.
We left that meeting feeling good, because everybody, all the stakeholders were against it going through the bottom farm.
When you take federal dollars, you have to go through the federal process. And again, Mrs. Harkemaier is on the OKI board, and she knows that. So again, we haven't spent any federal dollars on this project yet, but once we do, there's no turning back. So and if we do that, we have to go through that process. And ODOT's the one that said, put it back. If you want federal dollars, you have to put it back. And that's what they did, the engineers. STANTEC had been working on this continuously, collecting data and that type of thing. And so again, it's, it's three miles of pavement and somewhere between $75 and $90 million.
And it will reduce 11% of the traffic off of.
It'll take a small percentage off a high street, which is one of the primary goals, as far as that goes. But when you think about the 45 to 55 homes, the displacement, and the purchase of property, it becomes, well, it's an expensive project. But that's where we're at.
And I thank you for standing up for the Fairfield Township residents.
I appreciate that. I represent the board, and I try to make that very clear to them that, you know, we're not, we don't like either end of this. We don't like the end over by Zona's Place, and we don't like the, going through the bottom farm. So.
And this is actually an issue that the board has common ground on. I think we're one, we are with the Bonhams on this one, because that is their property. It is their property rights. And it's, I think, a big ask of Fairfield Township and our residents to do this. We would, I mean, we will get some potentially tangible or intangible benefits from this spooky nook development, but we're going to get that either way, whether or not we give this name up or not. And I think it's, it's a lot to ask of us and our citizens to give up for their, for their benefit. I think they're going to get a lot more benefit out of it than what we will. So I would just second that we should ask our residents to go out and talk about this, and go to the meetings and voice their concerns, because it's, you know, that's farmland. We care about farmland, and it's a generational kind of thing there. So if it, it would be different if the Bonhams said, you know what, we're okay giving this up, but that's not their position. And, you know, they are our residents, they are our constituents in this matter.
I have.
Okay, I've got a couple of things. I have been asked to serve on a housing committee for the county, and they're looking at a couple of different aspects of low-income housing, affordable housing, those kinds of things. And there are some.
affordable housing, those kinds of things. And there are some funding mechanisms available for this. So there were a couple of different thoughts or ideas that this committee was looking at. And the ask is, I wanna understand a little bit more about what the board, what Fairfield Township is thinking about this before I go back to the next meeting on October 26 to kind of present our viewpoints. So the thought is, is there needs to be more affordable housing for different people. There is kind of two, I guess, different schools of thought. One is putting up a big sort of complex, similar to what the YMC, YWC is putting up, where there would be people that would live in this. They would have services that are kind of a wrap around them that would be there to assist. The other would be utilizing more one-off kinds of situations, similar to what we're doing with our land banking. It would be identifying different parcels or different areas, different blocks of land that would be available, and then funding housing on that. Okay? So my thought, and I wanted to talk to both of you about this, was that I would think that Fairfield Township would be more interested in utilizing land bank properties that we currently own and suggest those as potential development sites for affordable housing, similar to what's been going on with Habitat for Humanity. There is at least one other developer that I know of, and I just found out about it at this meeting, that likes to do properties like that. So I think I've forwarded to Chuck, and he was gonna do some research on that. But that would be, I would think, more of the tact that we would take for working with this housing commission as opposed to saying, let's put up some, or let's allocate land for some sort of complex here in Fairfield Township. So what are your all's thoughts on that?
Well, this is new information. I'm not sure what they're looking to do, so before I can really give you a, a, where I stand, I like what we're currently doing.
That's kind of the tact, is do we wanna continue doing what we're currently doing?
Yeah.
Or do we wanna look at putting up a larger-scale apartment complex or working with some sort of, and again, it wouldn't be Fairfield Township being the landlord, because that's not, that's not in our activities. So I guess the ask is, do we wanna keep doing what we're doing? Is that working? Or do we wanna look for some place, say in Five Points, where we could put up a larger group complex with multiple apartments or something like that?
Yeah, I'm not in favor of that without looking at any kind of data. I would also like to ask our input from our police and fire chiefs, you know, what that sort of development would bring with it. I like what we're doing now with Habitat. You know, we're giving individual families that, you know, apply and put their own sweat equity into their home. I like that. And I don't think we have any large plots of lands that would, land that would support a large.
It would be like apartments, like an apartment complex.
I don't see why that would work for us. So I'm happy the way we're going.
You know, apartments, rental complexes have come up in the past, and the township residents have been very vocal about not wanting that. And so I agree. But the difference, of course, with Habitat, with Humanity, is they own the house. It's a single-family house. They own it. They pay for it. And that seems to be working. And when we were at the dedication, we met the new CEO and suggested that we have some more lots that we were interested in. And it's my understanding that they would like to do some work next year even. So but as far as a large scale.
Like a multifamily or multi-unit?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't, we don't have a lot of land left to develop, and most of what we have needs to be some type of commercial. So I would say that we're, our development as a township is past that.
Right.
I don't see where we have it. And again, I think we ought to stick with what we're doing with the Habitat and turn vacant lots or problem lots into tax-producing.
Yep.
Home ownership. I mean, that, to me, is exactly what we need to be doing.
All right.
I think it sounds like we have common ground on that, then.
Another thing we're united in.
Another thing we're united in. So that was kind of my opinion on that as well. I like what we're doing. I like how the work that we've done in Five Points, where we have taken distressed nuisance properties, and we've turned those into wonderful homes. So that's kind of what I was, I was thinking the board would be moving towards, but I wanted to check with you first. So my follow-up is gonna be to get with Mr. Goins and Mrs. Von der Har before this meeting, and I wanna take a look at our properties. I wanna do a drive-around with you and just kind of get a little bit more ideas so I can go to that meeting and let them know that we have some spaces available, if there is an opportunity for development for those.
Okay.
Not an apartment.
Right, not rental homes, you know, ownership, home ownership.
Right.
Okay.
We have enough single-family rentals in the township already. We have a whole lot more than we even know.
Oh, sure. There's plenty. Let's see. Another thing, the OTA conference is coming up. And the CLOUT, one of the, we're gonna have a special CLOUT workshop like we usually do. The topic for this one is going to be looking at mental health. And we're going to be having sort of a, the work session will be on talking about mental health for our staff, mental health supports for our community, those kinds of things. So that will be a facilitated discussion of some variety, where we're, where we're talking about that and maybe getting some best practices. So I've asked Mrs. Von der Har, our staff, about some of the best practices that we have. This is way out. This is, you know, not until first quarter. But just so that we can go prepared and say, here's some of the things that we're doing in Fairfield Township. And I believe they'll be taking all of that and putting that together so that it can be shared across CLOUT. Thanks to Fairfield City Schools. The parade was wonderful. The invitation to the football game was wonderful. I really do appreciate the relationship that we have with the school board, so that was, that was a good event. And also, special thanks to Chief Thomas. I attended the CPR class, and I've taken a lot of those over the years. This was, this is my favorite one. I learned a lot. It was very hands-on. I even learned more than just CPR. We saw some of the equipment that we have. One of them is a Lucas machine, which is pretty neat, because if you are, if you've ever had to do CPR, even when we were training, you've gotta do that for a minute, and your arms are gonna get tired. This Lucas machine that we have does the compressions. So that's a really good thing to help our first responders. If they are, if they are having to do CPR, they can hook this up, and it can even be utilized on the ambulance ride to the, to the hospital. So learned about that, a couple other things, but it was absolutely one of the best CPR classes that I've ever taken, and I learned a lot. So thank you. That's all I've got. Okay.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee McAbby?
Yes.
And as of 9:36, we're adjourned.